Meeting to order, joined by my colleagues to my far left, Councilmember Juan, Councilmember Dozier, and of course, to my right, Vice Chair, Councilwoman Caria Overstreet, make a motion to approve the agenda. Motion has been made in second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, foyer zero nays, the agenda has been adopted.
And motion to approve the minutes. Motion has been made in second, please open the vote.
The vote is open, the vote is closed, foyer zero nays, the minutes have been approved.
Thank you, that takes us to public comments, do we have the sheets? As we get the sheets, just remind everyone, if you're signed up to speak, you have three minutes, please keep your comments courteous and direct it to the committee. Thank you, I only have one person to sign up, and Mr. Chidi, George Chidi, you have three minutes, sir.
Does it matter?
You're speaking now.
Okay, so my name is George Chidi, I'm a journalist, I write for The Guardian, I normally cover issues of democracy and politics. I'm a long observer of Atlanta stuff. And normally, I'm not a guy to speak at a public meeting or a public comment, however, I've been wanting to look at procurement, particularly at the airport, for a while, and a contract that is going to be voted on today has come to my attention, so it's like, this is, this is the dipstick, me sticking in and going, oh, what's, what's this one look like? The item is twenty-five R four-one-two-two, it's item twenty on your agenda. This is a contract to give services, the oversight of ground transportation at the airport. Basically, the entity that will figure out who gets to be a driver, a, you know, a limousine driver, a taxi driver at the airport, along with managing, you know, ground transportation there. My understanding is that this contract, like the winning bidder bid about thirty million dollars, and that competing bids for this were as much as a third lower, like twenty million dollars over the same period. I am not here to lob an accusation, like, I'm actually coming at this fairly cold, but this is my, my canary in the coal mine, I don't actually know what's going on here. So I am asking each of you, you know, you know, Chairman Amos, you know, Councilman Dozier, Councilman Juan, Councilwoman Overstreet, all of you, to ask the questions that I would ask of this, like, why? Like, what, just walk me through the process for civic purposes, as an education, as an example to say, alright, so I think we've sorted out the procurement issues at the airport that have raised people's attention, here's what it looks like right now, let's go through this one. How is it that this bidder, I think it's Lay's, I don't know, it's Lay's, comes in with a bid that's three million dollars a year over the next highest one, and wins the contract? Like, what, how does the scoring actually work? So that I can demonstrate to the public that you all understand, like, that, what that scoring looks like, and that you're comfortable with it. I appreciate it, and I'm curious if you've got questions.
Thanks, sir. Seeing no one else on the list, that brings us to the end of our public comment, which takes us to item F, public hearing, make a motion to enter into public hearing. Motion has been made in second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, foyer zero nays, the public hearing is now open.
Thank you, I have the public hearing sheet here, Mr. Johnson, you want to sign on the caption first, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, item number one, twenty-five oh one five-two-nine, and ordinance by Councilman Antonio Lewis, authorizing the abandonment of a portion of St. John Circle Southwest, consisting of approximately zero-point-two-six-one acres, lying, being more specifically described in the attachments of A, lying and being in landlot ninety of the fourteenth district of Fulton County, Georgia, authorizing the mayor, or his designated executive quick claim D for such abandonment right away, and any other documents necessary to effectuate Authority Incorporated doing business ass. Metro Atlanta Land Bank waiving certain provisions of the Code of Ordinances and other purposes.
Thank you, I have the public hearing sign-in sheet, no one is here to speak to this issue. Second, motion has been made to close public hearing in second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, foyer zero nays, the public hearing is now closed.
Thank, thank you, sir. Make a motion to hold this item. Motion has been made in second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, foyer zero nays, the item is held in committee.
Thank you, sir, takes us to our communications, proceed.
Item number two, twenty-five C zero-one-one-eight, a communication from Donald T. Penovi, CPA, Chair Audit Committee submitting the performance audit report moving Atlanta Forward twenty-twenty-five annual review.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, council members, my name is Dwayne Braithwaite, I will be presenting the results of the Moving Atlanta Forward Audit. The team for this audit was Chris Armstead, Amani Adams, Lyndon Kuhn, and myself. We undertook this audit as required by ordinance twenty-two oh thirteen sixty-nine, adopted by the city council on May two thousand twenty-two. The ordinance established increased oversight, accountability, and resident participation with the intent of improvement project delivery for the Moving Atlanta Forward Infrastructure Program. In addition to requiring quarterly reports from four city departments on project statuses, city council also required the city auditor to conduct an annual review of the financials and project delivery for the program, and present the findings to Transportation and Finance Exec Committees. We released the previous audits on December two thousand twenty-three and December two thousand four. This is the third of those required reports. To answer our audit objective, we reviewed recommendations made in the previous audit against current progress to identify which risks have been mitigated, analyzed program spending, and reviewed project phases for all projects identified in the strategic delivery plan. Exhibits one and two on page three of the report show the funding breakdown, voters approved the Moving Atlanta Forward Infrastructure Program in two thousand twenty-two. This seven-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar program aims to improve the city's streets, sidewalks, parks, recreation centers, and public safety facilities. It is partially funded by Transportation Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, or T-Splash, and by two general obligation bonds for horizontal and vertical infrastructures. The bonds also included thirty-six million in council discretionary funds, allowing council members in each district to use three million for neighborhood projects that are not already funded by the program. City council adopted a strategic delivery plan for the program in two thousand twenty-three to establish a project management framework and identify the role of each city department in the program. The plan also included monitoring and control measures to ensure projects comply with scheduled budget and scope. The program is administered through the mayor's office, but three departments directly oversee the projects, the Department of Transportation, Enterprise Asset Management, and Parks and Recreation. Enterprise Asset Management oversees projects funded by the vertical infrastructure bond, and Transportation and Park manage the, under the horizontal infrastructure bond. As of the end of fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, the total amount spent on Moving Atlanta Forward projects reached nearly ninety-seven million, amounting to fifteen percent of the overall planned project budget. This is nearly double the amount the project spent as of two thousand, as of our two thousand twenty-four audit. Exhibit seven shows the beginning, early in the fiscal year of two thousand twenty-four, spending began to accelerate and increased each quarter through, through the end of fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. The planned budget, the planned project budget is six-hundred-and-sixty million of the overall seven-hundred and legislated seven-hundred-and-fifty million. We included ninety million of local discretionary funds, overhead, and other costs, as these are not, that, we, we excluded, I apologize, we excluded ninety million of the local discretionary funds, overhead, and other costs, as these are not directly under the managing department's control. The strategic delivery plan listed two-hundred-and-seven funded allocations that the city council approved. Of these two-hundred-and-two, of which two-hundred-and-two were projects, some of the two-hundred-and-two planned projects have been broken out into smaller projects, which will show different completion percentages as the, as the program has progressed. Because of this, information provided by the departments will show a much larger number of projects. However, our methodology has remained consistent to track the list of projects that were included in the strategic delivery plan initially approved by city council. We reviewed the status of the two-hundred-and-two projects as of May two thousand twenty-five that were listed in the strategic delivery plan. The plan scheduled projects to start across different calendar years, which were organized into five batches as shown in exhibit nine. As of May of two thousand twenty-five, one-hundred-and-sixty-eight, which represents eighty-three percent of the two-hundred-and-two projects, have begun. Of these one-hundred-and-sixty-eight projects, more projects, sixty-four, were in the planning and scoping phase than any other phase. However, the projects do not always progress through the phase, through the phases on the same schedule. For example, a project procured under an indefinite delivery contract could go from the engineering phase directly to construction, which could impact reported project status. All projects in batch one have started, and seven projects from batch two have not started. According to Parks and Recreation staff, three of these seven projects are now in the planning and scoping phase, and the other four are on hold. City staff told us that these projects are on hold for various reasons, for example, the city is coordinating with external partners to secure additional funding. Exhibit seven in the report shows funds spent today excluding council discretionary accounts. In our previous audit, we found that Parks and Recreation had spent the most funds at twenty-two million, and the department continues to lead the department's spending, and has since doubled its spending to forty-six million. Transportation increases spending from eighteen million to thirty million, and Enterprise Asset Management more than doubled its spending from seven million to seventeen million. Among the funding sources, the horizontal bond has spent, has the most spending, which has also found, which was also found in our previous audit. However, T-Splash spending nearly doubled since two thousand twenty-four, rising from nine million to seventeen million. Non-discretionary public spending has moved faster in some districts than others. Similar to our previous audit findings, as of August two thousand twenty-five, districts six, eight, and nine had the highest paid and encumbered amounts, while districts one, two, and twelve had the lowest. Spending differences stem from factors like project timing and batching plans. Nearly half, forty-seven percent, of all funds are set aside from citywide and multi-district projects. The program has committed to addressing each project and has included a contingency fund to manage cost overruns, but if early projects exceed their budgets, the city may need to scale back or cancel later projects. The department reported working with the chief operating officer to define equity, excuse me, implement a consistent scoping process, and integrate risk management practices to reduce delays since our previous audit. These processes are still ongoing. And I want to highlight here that in exhibit twelve, excuse me, down at the bottom, we mislabeled citywide and multi-district, so those should be flip-flopped at the bottom of that. Alright.
Sir, just for clarification, just the title or the entire line?
Just the title.
Okay.
Just the title, sorry. The strategic delivery plan outlines required project management documentation. We randomly sampled six of, six projects to test for required documents in the planning and scoping phase, and another twelve projects for documents required for construction and closeout phases. For the planning and scoping phase, departments improved from previous audits by having all roles and responsibility matrix and all but one fully filled-out risk register. However, none of the six projects had a completed project management plan, and one department used a different template altogether. For the construction and closeout phases, departments had most documents related to change orders when applicable, some documents, some documentation for pay applications, and about a third of the construction daily reports. We found at least some documentation for all of the pay applications, but only one-third met all the department's criteria for completeness. For the dashboard, the program has publicly launched, for the dashboard, the program, the program has publicly launched the dashboard since the last audit, and implemented our recommendations to add project-level spending data. We found potential discrepancies between the dashboard and the actual project financials, and our recommendation about explaining at-risk projects for the dashboard was not fully implemented. While we expected to find some differences between dashboard financials and information in Oracle due to data lags, paid funds showed a six-point-seven-million-dollar higher in Oracle than in the dashboard. In our two thousand four review of the Moving Atlanta Forward program, we made ten recommendations to the chief operating officer and the commissioner, commissioner of the Department of Parks and Recreation to improve project monitoring, cost controls, and transparency. As of August two thousand twenty-five, the chief operating officer and the Parks Commissioner, in partnership with the departments, implemented four of these ten recommendations and reported progress towards the other six recommendations. The audit team dropped one of the in-progress recommendations that was a lower priority. The four implemented recommendations are to develop decision criteria, to prioritize projects if funding is limited, to designate a central oversight position, to add project-level spending to the dashboard, and to create separate purchase orders by project. The other six included ensuring compliance with required project documentation, creating a system to track soft costs, and adjusting that, the dashboard and related processes for consistency and transparency. Appendix six provides a list of the recommendations and the total details, detailed explanation of the status of each of the implementations as of August two thousand twenty-five. The recommendations are listed on page twenty-seven of the audit report. We made three recommendations to the chief operating officer, who agreed with each of those recommendations. This concludes our presentation on the audit we conducted for the third annual MAF audit. We appreciate your courtesy and cooperation of the city staff throughout this audit process. Thank you for your time, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, sir, I see the first speaker, Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you for the presentation, just have a quick technical question about the presentation more so than the findings, but the pace of spending chart that you shared, broken out by city council district, one thing I noticed is that the breakout, at least on a map, is based on a new city council district lines that take effect at the end of the year, and my concern is that, just from a presentation standpoint, there might be projects that might be misallocated on the city council district breakout because of the GIS data that y'all are using, so I'll be curious actually to see that from like maybe an NPU basis, because that, those lines are static. As an example, Reverend James Orange Park in Oakland City, I think Moving Atlanta Forward had seven-point-one-million dollars allocated to that project, it's, costs has ballooned since then, but that ostensibly is on the District Twelve line, because the boundaries will shift, it'll be in District Twelve beginning next year, and so, I bring that up too, because, you know, District Two shows four percent expenditure encumbrance, but they had a significant shift in boundaries, and I wonder if we might be missing some analysis there because of that spatial analysis.
Yes, and that might be possible, so we were using the district identified in the Moving Atlanta Forward dashboard, or PNG, is it in both? Is it, and, and projects and grants module, so if that hasn't been updated, our numbers haven't been updated either, we just overlaid the district boundaries.
Understood, and that's something that, some commentary I shared with Department of City Planning earlier in the year, where they kind of jumped the gun with the maps that they posted online, because, like I said, it hasn't taken effect, and so that has, the, you know, find your council person, it's all tied to our GIS database, and if we're using maps that are coming but aren't current, then that could create some misleading information about what's happening on a district-by-district basis, but if y'all could potentially reproduce this on an NPU basis, I think that would be helpful for our understanding of how some of these dollars are being spent across the city in, like I said, a more static way.
Okay, and whether we can do that kind of depends if the projects show which NPU they're in, so we can work with the departments and see if that information is available.
Okay, and then, I know the scope of this audit hasn't been tied to, is more so what is being spent departmentally, but I would be also interested to see numbers around the discretionary spend, just that, I'm, I'm curious where, for instance, District Four is compared to some of my colleagues, and what's happening with those expenditures. I mean, I already know that, you know, there's some more monies that we could be spending, because I meet regularly with the department, but if some of my colleagues are able to get dollars out the door faster than I am, I want to, you know, reach out to Councilman Overstreet or Councilman Lewis to figure out what they're doing to get things happening, so that, just that would be helpful just for, for my edification as well.
Yes, and we, we excluded the discretionary spending because several council districts hadn't allocated the funds yet, and we're, you know, holding that in case, you know, that an existing project needed some funds, so because the approaches were different by council district, it made more sense to us to just leave that off the table, but we can get that information for you.
Thank you so much, that's really all I have, Mr. Chair, you.
Thank you, next speaker, Councilmember Juan.
I'll start with, I'd like to hear from the administration, any response or just reflection on the audit findings and results, and then I've got a series of questions after that, please.
Good morning, Transportation Committee.
Good morning.
Solomon Cavendish, Transportation, Department of Transportation Commissioner. So, I would first go on to say that this audit felt different than past audits. I think the understanding of the program, our experience over the last two years, has changed the nature of the audit, and their understanding of our goals. As you see within the audit, the spending has improved, which we've purported in the past as it relates to front-loading the design and scoping of projects, and, you know, we don't record spending until invoices are in and we're making payments, so I think working with this group, we had very spirited interactions, and it was very productive. So, this audit represents a different flavor than what we'd seen in the past, and as we speak to equity and our priorities, I think this audit has done a much better job in terms of reflecting the realities on the ground.
While you're there, I'd like to ask, there are, of the three findings, two of them, the administration only partially agreed with the findings, and one of them has to do with the at-risk projects, and the other has to do with the dashboard. I'd like to understand what the partial agree is, what, what didn't you agree with?
So, the dashboard obviously is, excuse, is in perpetual improvement as we've accepted the formatting and the input from the public and this body, but also relative to the way it's reported, given the nuances involved in the three departments that are involved, and the three different types of projects. So, we think that we came to understand each other better, and there's some improvements we can make in terms of communicating and working together with the council.
What about the at-risk project recommendation, which, what part did you not agree with?
So, relative to our work with the mayor's office of strategic, excuse me, the chief strategy officer, that was a new, I guess, element as part of this process, where they are coordinating between the departments, and when we think about the timelines, there's a conversation that needs to be had in terms of where we started with the legislation in two thousand twenty-two, and where we are now, and understanding the procurement process, the timelines that were originally scoped versus the reality of delivering on these projects, are they buildable? And relative to what was legislated in two thousand twenty-two and documented for at-risk, compared to where we are now, we've made adjustments, and we don't think we should necessarily be judged by the legislation that, or the language that was originally included in the legislation without having an understanding what it would take to deliver these projects. So, there's a conversation, I think, that needs to happen relative to what's considered at-risk and where we actually are in the real world.
Okay, I'm a little confused there, because as I read this, at-risk simply means that it was past its estimated completion date, but y'all were the ones that built the strategic delivery plan, so y'all were the ones who set the original batching and timeline. So, I'm, I'm just trying to understand, it, you, yeah, it just feels like you set the, you put the field, the goalposts up, and now you're saying you're having a discrepancy with the goalposts.
So, I'm glad you mentioned, back in two thousand twenty-two, when this was accepted, and this was prepared back in twenty-one, twenty-two, there were market conditions, there were different market conditions, there was scoping that started back then for these projects, but we hadn't actually developed the real timelines for the projects until the program started, so, you know, what's considered at-risk back in two thousand twenty-two is a much different story.
Okay, you, you said something, and I wrote it down, it makes me anxious, but I'm not, I'm just going to repeat it, and then we're going to move on, but you said, are they buildable? And that, that makes me very anxious in terms of that suggests that some are not buildable, but we'll come back to that. I do want to, this is, my next question is for the audit team. The documentation risk that, that y'all highlighted, particularly when it comes to the invoices and the financials, there's two different ways that can be problematic, or emblematic, I think. One is it can under-report progress, because if, for example, invoices haven't been put in, we don't have a current up-to-date spend, so we actually were reporting a spend that's less than where we are, and so the public thinks we're further behind than we actually are. I'm okay with that. What I am worried about, though, is it could also be an under-reporting of budgets and projected budgets, because there were expenses that had been incurred that we don't, aren't necessarily in the system, which means that the budgets are a little more, it's going to be a little more costly to do than we realize, because not all the information is in the system, and this is something that we have talked about up here a lot, is the cost to deliver, and how some of these may end up being not buildable because of a budget. So, can you assess, like, when y'all looked at this information, what's the risk of the, what would you attribute to kind of the first column, that is just, we're under, we're good, but we're behind on the progress number? And what would you say should we be worried about, okay, our budgets may be in trouble because we don't have all the full information in there?
Okay, so I'm, I, I agree that there are, there are different risks associated with, you know, lack of documentation, I, I'm, I'm not sure I'm prepared to say right now how much is in column A and how much is in column B, so what we were really looking at were key controls over scheduling and payments. So, the, the scheduling control, if those were more, you know, up-to-date, I think we'd have quicker real-time information about when a project might be at risk. One of the ways that One of the ways that we are in the city and our report is dealing with the potentially slower spend is we're also looking at committed. So we're we're counting those encumbered dollars as as a sign of progress.
Yeah, I'm, I've continued to express my anxiety over this. And I actually was talking with Councilmember Wykoff here that that's the reason why I haven't committed my discretionary is I just am, I'm not fully confident that I won't need that to plug the projects we've promised. And your findings about not all of the financial information is even in the system makes me even more worried about that because if we, like you said, if we had real time, then it's kind of a, we know, we know minute to minute where we're at with a project and the budget.
So the financial information, I mean, it should be in the system. When we, when we pay vendors, it is definitely in the system. There are, we identified a few, they're not in the system in the same way. So it's hard to pull it together by project. So, for example, and that's why we put a reconciliation of PNG on our audit plan for this year is we found some dollars for Moving Atlanta Forward hit the general ledger without hitting PNG. And that is probably just an accounting error, but we want to see, okay, how do we go through? It wasn't, was a huge amount. But there are, you know, slight discrepancies depending on which source we use, if we use the general ledger versus PNG. Also, Parks is tracking projects instead of individual projects with PNG through purchase orders. So it's, the the financial information is there. It just takes a little bit to pull it out.
I I think we're early enough in the process where I get it. But I would say in the next cycle of the audit, I mean, I think that may be something when when we do our pre-audit meeting that I'm going to lean into because at some point, we're going to have to really get our heads around where we're at progress-wise and budget-wise. So I appreciate that. Mr. Chair, I mean, I had just have two observations. I appreciate the acceleration in spending. But in year two and a half, three, whatever, whichever you want to consider ourselves in in terms of this this initiative, that we're only at, what, 15% is really alarming to me because even in a linear way, we'd be doing 20% a year. And we haven't even hit what would be kind of that that one-year benchmark. So we we got to figure out a way to continue accelerating that. I think the findings around the dashboard are also really, really important because we are fielding a lot more questions now about specific projects in our district. And it's hard when we can't point to a resource and say, just go look there. You'll you'll see, and you'll have a level of confidence and transparency around where we're at. So I I hope that that finding, yeah, that that we lean into that one a little bit because, again, you know, as we move further along and as we talk about other big financing projects here at the city that are before us, a lot of folks are pointing back to this particular project as they're just bellwether in terms of whether the city can deliver or not. So, Mr. Chair, our yield, thank you.
Okay, if I can respond just a little bit. I don't think it would be fair to expect the department to do linear progression because of the, so, so we're starting to see the curve bend and, you know, hopefully we see that more.
I agree, but even even with kind of the a bend like that, 15% in year two is is not as far as I would hope that we would have been. So thank you.
Okay, understood. I I would also say that the, we we identified a discrepancy. It wasn't huge between the financials and the dashboard. But the timing, you know, we weren't looking at exactly the period that it was pulled. So we expect a little bit of a discrepancy. So I think that the dashboard is a good resource for your constituents to look at.
Next speaker, Councilmember Lewis.
Now, I think I'm the opposite right now. I remember a year ago, Councilmember Faroki, two years ago, and we were looking at the pie graph and we were thinking about how small District 2 was and it was compared to District 12. And it was for the first time he had ever seen District 2 look like District 12. And it was just so small. But to see District 12 now look like District 8, it shows the progress. And one of my colleagues was talking about discretionary spending. What we did was use it to infuse the projects. We legit looked at projects we were working on in our area, and we looked at ways in which we could move funding to that area for, using discretionary funding, which is how we were able to get more projects done in District 12 over the past two years since we were tied with District 2 at that 2% mark citywide. So truly appreciate the work that we've been able to do with the Transportation Department in our area to see the growth. Is there anything you would like to talk about or any kind of way you can explain Exhibit 13 to me and 12? And talk about some of the growth in District 12 that, over the last two years?
Um, we can provide you the projects if you want to look. I I cannot, off the top of my head, tell you why there was a difference.
What about the administration?
Absolutely, thank you, Councilmember Lewis. So this is clearly for the entirety of Moving Atlanta Forward. Transportation is a third of that spending. And we've obviously been working with council on all of our projects in progress. That does not mean we haven't been moving our renew projects. Sunsetting, as per the request when I first got here, is to get renew done and not put that to the side while we're doing Moving Atlanta Forward. We've been working with our partners, the Beltline. We've been working with MARTA and seeing how we can bundle and be smarter about how we deliver. So there's a lot of work we've been doing over the last year to accelerate movement in Council District 12 and all across the city.
I I know that was something that Council, that Councilmember Dozier spoke about, like ways in which we were using discretionary fundings into, look at the MARTA project. That was a huge way because they did take over three projects that were in our batch. MARTA, for the first time, we did the public-public partnership with the City of Atlanta ATL DOT and with MARTA in which they took over the Raff Davy Abernathy, Cleveland and Metropolitan and Cleveland Avenue Safe Streets. But truly want to say thank you for being able to work with your staff or with the ATL DOT for the past two years. Looking forward to seeing shelters get on the ground. I'll tell you, the hurry, hurry up and wait happened so much so that we had to then partner with Atlanta Habitat to allow them to do dig holes first so they don't mess up our black silky roads when we get them on Metro, on Mount Zion Road and we get them on Brownsman Road. So truly happy to work with you on the South Side.
And I just mentioned that that's a great example in terms of what's buildable. So when I mentioned buildable to Councilmember Juan, we want to make sure that our scoping and our, our actions are realistic. We don't want to say pie in the sky. This is what we scoped. We go in and due to lack of experience or engagement from the departments, when we get to construction, we find out that it's not realistic. So we've made sure that we've gone back and also, from a financial standpoint, evaluated how realistic some of the plans are.
I I'll tell you that my district, folks on Empire Boulevard and on Brownsman Road have been so interactive with the Transportation Department that I've heard them name people by names. They know the project managers that are working. We've seen them push back, push back things that didn't work for the community. And so truly happy to work with you and looking forward to getting the rest, the other 40% because my goal in my job is get the, not 60, get the entire projects done in my district. Thank you again.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Our next speaker, BI Vice Chair, Councilwoman Overstreet.
Yeah, so I've heard a few of my questions answered. I do still have just project delivery angst around our, our whole, whole list, to be honest. It it isn't enough projects being delivered fast enough, and that's just the bottom line. But I actually have a specific question about the four out of 10 recommendations that were completed or implemented. I think that's, that's good. But then they said six in degrees of variance. And I want to understand better about that. Where are we with completing the six? Can ATL DOT let me know about that? And then I hear we actually decided to take one of the six off, right? So it's, we're really trying to complete five. Does that sound right?
Yes, so we, we have the status in Appendix C of the report that has a table. So I think the the six were partly implemented and one, the administration indicated that that was as far as they were planning to go. So we, and it was not a high priority for us, so we dropped that one. And I'm trying to scroll down and see. Yeah, there's pretty detailed information. Do you have particular questions about one of any of the recommendations?
Yeah, I want to know, because I, when recommendations are made, I do want them implemented. So, I mean, I want to know when they're going to be all completed.
And sometimes when we make the recommendation and the administration agrees, we might not completely be on the same page. So when we come back and say, but you didn't do this, they're like, I didn't agree to do that. So this, we just have to make sure we have clarity of what's agreed to. But I mean, I, we've seen progress.
Okay, well, that's, that's good. Thank you for for saying that. You know, at the end of the day, it, these are all projects that really will make the lives of everyone better in the long run. And they all really do need to be implemented and I, or completed. And I just, I I look for the day when we're talking about more than 15%. That's, that's where I want to be. So just want to, for the record, again, state how important it is that we deliver on these moving Atlanta Forward dollars certainly close out the, the renew T-splas. Like, it just needs to get done. So thank you for the audit.
Thank you. Our next speaker would be Councilwoman Wykoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and hello, thank you. I I appreciate you coming and giving this report. I took on District 2 about a month ago, so I am very aware that I have some funds to encumber. But as I sit here and listen to my colleagues, I do echo that there is fear, right? Okay, I'm encumbering funds. Project delivery is 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 slow. And I think we all feel that as constituents. And so based on these recommendations, you know, I see some hefty goals here for for your team. And what are your thoughts on those about, you know, completing project management plans, doing daily construction reports? And how can the public get access to that as well?
Let's see, so we, we check the, the strategic delivery plan outlined a series of controls that were really intended to keep the project on track and on budget. So when we do our annual review, we are testing whether those controls were followed. And we found in some cases, you know, the documentation isn't there or it might not be there yet. It probably wouldn't be appropriate for the public to be looking at daily construction reports. But they do have access to the dashboard that has pretty up-to-date information about, you know, the status of the project and spending.
Okay, well, let's take, for example, the watershed management that happened at the Rainbow Crosswalk the other day, last week. You know, that was a huge imposition to our constituents, noise and everything. And so I would encourage having some type of additional public report that talked about the constructions so that they're aware of the noise because we get dozens of emails. We have lots of business owners reaching out to us, MPUs reaching out to us, asking about updates. And so it would be helpful to have that to be public in some way she performed. Thank you.
Thank you. That finished our speaker, but I I definitely, good questions. And I would like to know if the administration would like to answer any of your questions because I think they would be better answered probably by the, from the administration than the auditor, so.
And again, thank you to all and all of your points. They push us as this program started when I got here in terms of delivery in 2023. But, you know, you echo the sentiment of your constituents. We represent the residents, and everything we're here to do is move Atlanta forward. So it's a group project. We work with council, we work with Transportation Committee. We've made headways, we've made much progress, I'd say. However, there are yet still things to do. So I absolutely agree in terms of communication. Atlanta is under construction. Yeah, we got holes everywhere. We are preparing for a lot. Communication goes a long way. So we beefed up our communications programming. We have, there's a rumor that we're top three in the country in terms of social media hits at this point. So that's a credit to the team. But what you'll find on the fourth floor here in City Hall with the Department of Transportation, totally different energy from when I got here. I credit all the team who actually come to transportation, who participate, who make sure that they are available on Saturdays, Sundays, after their normal hours. And I just want to mention that the Department of Transportation has a $2.4 billion program, capital program. Moving Atlanta Forward is the the more contemporary program. However, we have commitments to make sure that our entire capital program to move Atlanta Forward is addressed. And also, all of our 311 requests and all of the work that goes on daily and in communication with this body. So I really appreciate the change in tone and the openness of this audit group as we've moved this along. And I want to continue to work with you and improve the Department of Transportation's delivery.
Thank you. I have, seeing the other questions, I have one. We passed a paper, I've been looking for, LDIQ. It it was made to be able to move contracts for, I mean, projects forward quicker. Are we still using that, implementing that? Because there was a group of contractors we could call on immediately to move projects forward. Where are we on?
Yes, so we've enacted or took, taken advantage of a number of procurement instruments, including IDIQ. And I'll give you an example. This year, you know, we've had a consultant, Jacobs, come on and help us in terms of our means and methods of delivery. And while we are currently or within the audit at 42 million spend, by the end of this year, we'll be at 98 million spend. And that just speaks to the acceleration and the engagement of the contract community. We only expect to accelerate that going into 2026. You layer that on with projects that are, you can transpose from the audit bond and downtown improvement work, which includes about 23 million additional to the Moving Atlanta Forward. So we only see an acceleration by way of the IDIQ, and we're continuing to work with procurement. We actually have a procurement officer in our office now.
So hearing you write, the effect of the LDIQ is about to be seen, and it'll be that increase that we're, that you're expecting by the end of the year. How do we double that? Do we need to do another LDIQ group, other people together?
So, sorry if I misled you. We actually activated this contracting instrument back in, earlier this year, about middle of this year. And it has accelerated our ability to get work done. And we are moving the IDIQ large. That was just recently signed, so.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Most has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six shades, zero names, items accepted and filed. This do refer, item will be forwarded to the FEC committee.
Thank you. And that takes us to our regular consent agenda before we move forward. I don't think I have properly announced the arrival of Councilmember Wykoff and Councilmember Lewis. So welcome, so proceed.
This takes us to our consent agenda, Section H ordinance for first reading, item number 32501602, in order by Transportation Committee on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to amend ordinance 2201794 adopted by the Atlanta City Council on November 7, 2022, and approved per City Charter Section 2-403 on November 16, 2022 by adding additional funding sources or other parts of the legislation to remain unchanged and for other purposes. This takes us to our regular agenda. Section I ordinance for second reading, item number 42501572, in order by Transportation Committee authorizing the City of Atlanta to waive the competitive procurement source selection provisions contained in Section 2-1187 of Article 10 Procurement and Real Estate Code, of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, as well as any other conflicting code provisions to execute Amendment Number 1 to Contract Number listed herein, SOB. SOB Aero Band Airport Surface Management Systems Services with SOB Incorporated at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport, on behalf of the Department of Aviation to authorize additional funding in amount of $142,780.00 to add an application programming interface to integrate Power BI and other software for better real-time data visualizations with the Aviation Information Services IT Department Division, excuse me, for use throughout the Department of Aviation for a total overall contract amount not to exceed $4,858,933, $30,000.00 all contracted work we charge to and pay from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Second, motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays, one abstention. This item is favorable.
Next item?
Item number 5, 2501573. An ordinance by Transportation Committee to ratify services rendered in connection with agreement number listed herein, Cleveland Avenue Pedestrian Mobility Improvements with Brinley Peters and Associates Incorporated from June 28, 2025 through the execution of the amendment authorized by City Council to authorize the mayor or his designated to amend the agreement on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to extend the term of the agreement retroactively effective from June 28, 2025 through the final completion of the Cleveland Avenue Pedestrian Mobility Improvements Construction Project with no additional funding required to waive Article 10 of the City of Atlanta Procurement and Real Estate Code. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the fund, department, organization, and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Second, motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. Item number 6, 2501574. An ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated on behalf of the Department of Transportation to accept surface transportation block grant award funds from the Georgia Department of Transportation for the North Highland Joseph E. Lowery McLendon and West Paces Ferry at five locations transportation improvement project to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the fiscal year 2026 budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations in amount not to exceed $453,908.00 for the project to authorize the mayor or his designated to execute agreements with the Georgia Department of Transportation for acceptance of grant acceptance and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable.
Before we move forward, I see that Joseph E. Lowery is, is in this paper. I see that we have begun to, I think we call it milling, prepping it for paving. So thank you, A T L D O T. I know my colleague would definitely say thank you. And soon as you finish, Lowery, we got another list you can move on to as well. So thank you. Proceed, Mr. Johnson.
Item number 7, 2501575. An ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the City of Atlanta to waive Section 2-1187 and Section 2-1292E of Article 10 Procurement and Real Estate Code of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, as well as any other conflicting code provisions to execute the First Amendment to Agreement Number Listed Herein, Group AA3 Traffic Communications Projects with Lumen A Transportation Technologies LLC on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to extend the term of the agreement retroactively effective from July 26, 2025 through the final completion of the project with no additional funding required to ratify services rendered in connection with the agreement beginning July 26, 2025 through execution of the First Amendment to the agreement and for other purposes.
Second, motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. Item number 8, 2501576. An ordinance by Transportation Committee to ratify the City of Atlanta submission of an application for the fiscal year 2024 Congressional Directed Spending Highway Infrastructure Program from the U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Highway Administration in amount not to exceed $5,000.00 to be utilized for the implementation of the Stitch capping I-7585 in Downtown Atlanta Project to accept the funding awarded to authorize the mayor or his designated to execute any necessary agreements for grant acceptance and participation to amend the fiscal year 2026 intergovernmental budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations in the amount not to exceed $5,000.00 and for other purposes.
We have a question. Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Just a question for the department. For this application, this acceptance of this money, I felt there were some mixed messages from Washington about their willingness to support this project. So I'm just curious how the department's navigating that, considering that we did have a federal grant assigned to this that was rescinded. But then this looks like a separate part of money that would be going to the project from the federal government. So I'm just trying to wrap my head around that.
So the Stitch project includes the first award, which we have in hand for the design. And we've decided to work with Georgia Department of Transportation on a design-build approach to the Stitch project. The second half is construction, and the construction is upwards of 150 million, which obviously is at risk. So we want to continue design. We've bundled our programming associated with the Stitch for the match. So we want to make sure that we can receive those dollars, those federal dollars, for the continuation of the design so that we're shovel-ready when money still become available.
Is there any concern that the design dollars are at risk at any point in this process? And if they are, what does that mean for the health of the project moving forward?
A short answer, we do not feel that there's a risk for design. Because everything's been executed and much of it has already come down.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, I yield and move approval.
Second, motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. Item number 9, 2501582. An ordinance by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone waiving Part II, Chapter II, Article 10, Division 4 of the Atlanta City Code to authorize the mayor or his designated to execute the First Amendment to Agreement Number Listed Herein, landscaping and grounds maintenance with Russell Landscape LLC to add, the Department of Aviation is authorized user, to add funds to the agreement in amount not to exceed $600,000.00 all contracted work will be charged to and paid from the fund, department, organization, and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable.
Mr. Chair. Before we proceed, most want you speak? Okay, proceed.
Mr. Chair, item number 10 requires a substitute. The substitute changes the caption. May we have a motion to bring forth a substitute?
Second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. The substitute before you. The substitute makes revisions in, in the caption and in the legislation and adds additional verbes regarding sponsorship benefits in Section 3 of the legislation. Item number 10, 2501586. An ordinance by Councilmember Marcy Callio, ancestry that's substituted by Transportation Committee waiving the competitive source selection requirements contained in Chapter 2, Article 10, Division 4 of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to authorize the mayor or his designated on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to execute agreements with program sponsors and to accept donations pursuant to Section 1-102(c)(7) of the City of Atlanta Charter in a total amount not to exceed $750,000.00 through the June 30 of 2026 for the purpose of supporting the Safe Routes to School program to provide that all sponsor funds and donations be deposited into and all related costs be paid from the Safety and Mobility Capital Finance Fund and for other purposes.
Second, motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable on substitute. Mr. Chair, item number 11 requires a substitute. The substitute changes the caption. May we have a motion to bring forth a substitute?
Second, motion has been made in second. Please, and please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. The substitute is before you. The substitute makes revisions in the caption to clarify the execution of appropriate agreements with the project partners to effectuate the acceptance of the grant funds. Item number 11, 2501588. An ordinance by Councilmember Howard Shook as substituted by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to accept additional surface transportation block grant award funds from the Georgia Department of Transportation for City Street 434 Lennox Road from City Street 3369 East Paces Ferry Road to State Route 141 project to authorize the mayor or his designated in his sole discretion to enter into and execute the appropriate agreements and other documents with project partners that the city attorney deemed necessary or advisable in order to effectuate the city's acceptance of the grant award funds subject to the mayor's execution of such agreements and other documents to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the fiscal year 2026 budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations such grant award funds in the amount of $1,765,758.00 and for other purposes.
Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable on substitute. This takes us to Section J Resolutions, item number 12, 25R4084. A resolution by Councilmember Byron D. Amos authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute a cooperative agreement number listed herein for airport runway equipment at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport with Fort Bran on behalf of the Department of Aviation pursuant to Section 2-1602 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, utilizing Sourcewell Contract Airport Runway Equipment Number Listed Herein for a term of 18 months in amount not to exceed $1,502,924.00 all contracted work will be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable on substitute. Excuse me, favorable, excuse me, sorry. Mr. Chair, item number 13 requires a substitute. The substitute changes the caption. May we have a motion to bring forth a substitute?
Second, motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. The substitute is before you. The substitute corrects the funding amount in the Eighth Warrant clause, First Binding Clause, and adds the fee schedule in the Third Binding Clause. Item number 13, 25R4085. A resolution by Councilmember Byron D. Amos as substituted by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute cooperative agreement number listed herein for winter operations and maintenance services at the Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport with Sharon Industries Incorporated on behalf of the Department of Aviation pursuant to Section 2-1602 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, utilizing Sourcewell Contract Airport One Way Materials Number Listed Herein for a term of 18 months in amount not to exceed $10,000.00 all contracted work will be charged to and paid from the fund, department, organization, and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable on substitute. Item number 14, 25R4086. A resolution by Councilmember Liliana Batiari requesting the mayor or his designated to install traffic calming devices on East Lake Drive between West Far Road and Memorial Drive Southeast in order to reduce speeding and for other purposes. Mr. Chair, this item may be substituted. The substitute just makes minor revisions in the legislation.
Second, motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
Will everyone? Will everyone please vote? The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. The substitute is brought before you.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable on substitute. Item number 16, 25R4118. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute the Second Amendment to the project framework agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for the I-75-I-85 capping study, the Stitch, project number listed herein in amount not to exceed $10,663,481.20 all contracted work will be charged to and paid from the fund, department, organization, and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. Mr. Chair, we skipped item number 15.
That's what I thought. We got you, Mr. Johnson. We got you.
Item number 15, 25R4087. A resolution by Councilmembers Dustin Hillis and Mary Norwood requesting the mayor or his designated to install stop signs at the intersection of Bowler Road Northwest and Cross Creek Parkway Northwest to create an always-stop control intersection and for other purposes.
Second.
Chair, the substitute makes revisions in the legislation.
Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. The substitute is brought before you.
Second, motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable on substitute. This takes us to item number 17, 25R4119. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute an agreement for Traffic Signal Enhancement Program Phase One with Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for a term of five years with two one-year renewal options in amount not to exceed $1,134,136.88 all contracted work will be charged to and paid from the fund, department, organization, and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Mr. Chair, this item will need to be held in order to receive the IPRO report.
Second, motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six yeas, zero nays. This item is held in committee. Mr. Chair, there is no objection from the body. Can we take items number 18 and 19 together?
Proceed.
Item number 18, 25R4120. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute an intergovernmental lighting agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for the purpose of assuming full responsibility and cause for compliance of the Georgia Utility Facility Protection Act in operation, repair, and maintenance of the lighting system included but not limited to damages, replacements of lamps, ballers, luminary structures, associated equipment, conduits, wiring service equipment of the lighting system installed by the Georgia Department of Transportation as part of the state route. of the State Route fourteen project as shown in exhibit A and for other purposes. Item number nineteen twenty five R four one two one. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute intergovernmental lighting agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for the purpose of assuming full responsibility and cause for compliance with the Georgia Utility Facility Protection Act and the operation, repair, and maintenance of the lighting system including but not limited to damages, replacements of lamps, ballers, luminary structures, associated equipment, conduits, wiring, service equipment of the lighting system installed by the Georgia Department of Transportation as part of the I twenty eastbound and Maynard Terrace Southeast Roundabout Project and for other purposes.
Second, motion has been made in second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six J zero nays, these items are favorable. This takes us to item number twenty twenty five R four one two two. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute an agreement for curbside management services with Last CCD Joint Venture on behalf of the Department of Aviation for an initial term of three years with two one-year renewal options in amount not to exceed ninety three thousand dollars and zero cents for the management fee and an amount not to exceed twenty nine million ninety one thousand five hundred forty four dollars and eighty cents for the reimbursable operating budget. All services will be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes, Mr. Chair. This item will need amendment, the amendment attaches to the I Pro report.
Motion has been made in second, please open the vote. Councilmember Lewis, I see you, we'll let you speak after this.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five Y zero nays, item is amended.
Councilmember Lewis.
I think my question would be to the to the sponsors of the paper, to the to the administration. I got an email this morning, I don't know if my colleagues got it as well. And made me want to ask a question about, in particular about what the email asked. It was about, was this about ten million more than? Can the administration just tell us a little bit about this paper? A journalist, they were asking questions about this paper in particular.
Right. Good morning, I am Tyrone Smith, Senior Deputy General Manager for the Department of Aviation. This is a paper for curbside management services at the airport. You're asking specifically about the solicitation process, and so I'll turn it over to the Department of Procurement.
Good morning, Council Chair, Topeka Howard, Deputy Chief Procurement Officer. This particular project is currently in the blackout period. And of course, the blackout period accrues from the point of advertisement until we receive a fully executed or effectuated contract that is signed by the contractor. So that's where we are in the process right now. No questions can be responded to from us. We are officially in the blackout period and we want to make sure we uphold the integrity of the procurement process.
I'll ask my questions after Councilmember Wong.
Councilmember Wong.
All right, I'll ask the question in a different way then. So what are instances in which a procurement can be awarded to a higher price than a lower price? Because that seems to be the fundamental question, not specifically regarding this particular procurement.
This particular procurement was an RFP, not an IFV. IFV is regarding price. RFP, of course, are the proposals that are received. When the submissions come in, it is simply because the user agency is not fully astute about what they want. The proposals answer those criteria that are placed inside that proposal.
So the decision process isn't based solely on price? It is the whole package and what the vendors are offering, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, that helps clarify my mind the question, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lewis.
No other questions, I just wanted to make sure I asked the investigative question that was sent out to us before this came up. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Second, so that's motion on the floor to approve as amended, been made, and second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five Y zero nays, this item is favorable on substitute. Mr. Chair, we have one item coming off held.
Proceed.
Item number thirty on page thirteen. It is item number thirty twenty five R four zero zero one, a resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute an agreement for the City of Atlanta's Comprehensive Transportation Plan with WSP USA Incorporated on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for the development of the city's comprehensive transportation plan and associated scope for a term of two years with no renewal option in amount not to exceed two million five hundred thousand dollars and zero cents of all funds to be charged to and paid from the project and account numbers listed herein. And for the purposes, Mr. Chair, this item will need to be amended, the amendment attaches to the I Pro report.
Motion has been made in second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. One moment. The vote is closed. One moment. One moment. The vote is closed, five Y zero nays, amendment, this item has been amended.
Motion to approve as amended. Motion has been made in second, I withdraw my motion.
It's okay with the motion.
You're good with motion, okay. We'll leave my motion stand, it has been made in second.
Yes.
Please proceed, open the vote.
Well, let me ask my question before we vote. So this is really, I think this may be for, unfortunately, the compliance folks. I just want to acknowledge that the I Pro report dollar amount is different than the caption. And I think maybe just for completeness, they should match.
Councilmember, I think we need to do our due diligence to follow up on the difference.
So we probably are not aware. Condition that we get this resolved by Monday, I'm sorry to have a report, but yeah, one says two million, one other says two point five.
So motion to approve as amended with the condition that we solve this discrepancy before Monday. Want to do its due diligence.
We'll have that together by Monday.
That's motion on. Motion on the floor that has been made in second, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five Y zero nays, this item is favorable as amended on condition. Mr. Chair, that concludes our legislative items for today.
We have one speaker, Councilmember Dozer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just before we adjourn, I do want to share a couple announcements. One, just a reminder to the general public and to the folks in this room, including myself. Please go vote. Election Day is November the fourth, however, early voting ends on Friday. So as our former president once said, don't boo, vote, it's Halloween, that was a joke. I will also share that on Election Day, I currently serve on the Board of National Center for Civil and Human Rights, and we're having a ribbon cutting for the reopening of the National Center along with the new wing in honor of our former mayor Shirley Clark Franklin. So I want to invite you all to that event, it's at eleven o'clock over at National Center for Civil and Human Rights. And considering everything that's happening across the country, having institutions like that in our city are important to make sure we're doing everything in our power to preserve democracy, to fight for democracy, and to fight for the people who are currently experiencing challenges in the current state of our democracy here in America. And lastly, I wanted to share, even though that Veterans Day is on November the eleventh, on next Wednesday, November the fifth, here at Atlanta City Hall, the Office of Constituent Services is hosting a City of Atlanta Veterans Recognition and Veterans Resource Fair right here in the atrium honoring our city employees who are military veterans, as well as ensuring that those who are veterans who are in need of help, especially in this time with government shutdown and everything else going on, have resources available to them. So we want to make sure we invite as many of our veteran friends and community members and citizens here at Atlanta City Hall next Wednesday from eleven to, I'm sorry, from ten o'clock to one PM right in atrium. For sure, thank you.
Thanks, sir, next speaker, Councilmember Lewis.
Real quick, I believe in early happy, oh, sorry, wrong.
That's okay. No, I'll let you go earlier first, so you can go first and have your one tea too. But we have Hutchins Road Sidewalk Community Meeting at South Atlanta High School. It will be on October thirtieth, Thursday, October thirtieth. The first time we're activating our high school right in the middle of the community. Hutchins Road Sidewalk will be spoken about. We'll also talk about Brownsmere Road Sidewalk a little as we know that we are pausing for Atlanta Habitat to finish their cuts in the road. So thank you again, we'll be talking about Hutchins Road Sidewalk, South Atlanta High School, six PM to seven PM. Eight hundred Hutchins Road Southeast, Atlanta, Georgia. Thank you again.
Councilmember Wong. Okay, just a public service announcement, at our next scheduled transportation meeting, right now we are scheduled to have ATL DOT to present as well as the airport. So make sure you bring your breathless in the morning, put on your comfortable shoes. We may be here for a minute, so I just wanted to give you fair warning. With that being said, we stand adjourned.